The hour of 7:00 PM having arrived and a quorum of voters being president, it is my distinct pleasure to call to order the 2024 Tewksbury Special Town Meeting. My name is Dustin Weir, and I am privileged to serve as town moderator this evening. Let the record show that a properly served and returned warrant is in possession. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence and remembrance for the friends, family, and neighbors we have lost this past year. Thank you, please be seated. May I have the chair of the Select Board, Mr. Patrick Holland, please come to the podium for announcements of for items of interest to the Assembly?
Good evening, can everyone hear me? Okay, we just have a few announcements. The Tewksbury 9/11 Committee will hold a bench dedication for Mr. Fred Simon at the 9/11 Memorial on Wednesday, October 2 at 4:30 PM, all residents are invited to attend. The Tewksbury Police Department will hold their Coffee with a Cop event tomorrow from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM at Brundes and Prefecto's, we invite residents to attend. The Friends of the Elder are having a charity breakfast at the Tewksbury Senior Center this Sunday from 8:30 until noon, adults are just $10 and children under 5 are $5. Funds raised will help the Friends of the Elder in the holiday celebrations later this year, everyone is welcome to attend. The Tewksbury Congregational Church will behold a blessing of the animals on Sunday, October 6, 2024, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM at the church, residents are invited to bring their pets to this event. The Power of Flowers are having an open house workshop on Tuesday, October 8, 2024, from 11:30 to 1:00 PM. The Tewksbury, the town of Tewksbury will hold its first ever Halloween celebration at the Town Hall Center on Sunday, October 20, 2024, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. This is a free family event and we invite all residents to attend. The Tewksbury Lions Club will hold their third annual Princess Harvest Ball on Sunday, November 3, 2024, at Tewksbury Wilmington Elks, tickets are $20 per person, anyone interested can email princessharvestball@gmail.com. And finally, he's way over there, he's not going to be able to throw anything at me. I would like to acknowledge a person who has served this community for 14 years, his commitment to this community has been unparalleled, and this will be his last town meeting. And I want to congratulate him on his retirement, and again, his commitment to this town has been phenomenal, congratulations, Mr. Montori.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, and thank you, Mr. Montori. Welcome to the Tewksbury Special Town Meeting. As we begin our meeting, I want to take a moment to talk about the ground rules. Town meeting is a legislative body for our community, where we work together to debate the merits of the articles within the warrant before you. Please take a moment to refer to the glossary of terms at the back of your warrant. Because Tewksbury has an open town meeting, each registered voter in Tewksbury is eligible to act on fiscal issues, zoning changes, bylaw amendments, and other matters affecting the town. Voters must wear their voting ribbon conspicuously to be counted during the standing votes. Please ensure that it is on your person, not on your jacket. This meeting is being recorded. As we move through the articles, presenters or sponsors on articles will be allowed to speak first before I open the floor to debate. A voter desiring to speak should approach the microphone and wait to be recognized by me, and identify yourself when recognized by name and address for the record. I ask members of boards to do the same. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes to speak on an article, please speak clearly into the microphone so the body can hear you. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left on your time by tapping the podium. When you hear that tapping, it is, that is your signal to wrap up your remarks. Speakers can disagree with any official, with any other voter, volunteer, or any board. We have a strong tradition in Tewksbury of maintaining a respectful dialogue during town meeting. I will do everything I can to ensure each speaker is shown respect and that your questions are answered. I ask that all participants kindly do the same. Residents refusing to conduct themselves in a manner befitting this body will be asked to cede the floor and potentially be escorted from the meeting. I hope I don't have to enforce that rule, let's work together and to address the issues before this body fairly and efficiently. I will accept a motion to move the question, however, I reserve the right to make sure we have had some dialogue about the motion. All questions on the floor are to be directed to the moderator. If you are amending an article, you must present it to the town clerk in writing. We will vote on the amendment first, if the amendment passes, it will then become part of the main motion and we will discuss it. If the amendment does not pass, then we go back to the main motion as it is written in the warrant. When you came in tonight, you were given the warrant with the articles we will be discussing, along with the handout with the Finance Committee of Recommendations, the Planning Board Recommendations on the back, and a supplemental handout from the town manager with detailed explanations for several articles and funds. Scrivener's errors are also noted in that document. At this time, please silence your cell phones and ensure your voter ribbon is showing so that counters can easily see when we do standing counts. When we do a standing count, it is important that you pay attention to your counter and sit down once counted. Your counter will nod at you when you are counted. Please remain attentive to your counter until they acknowledge you, then you may be seated. Do we have anyone in the auditorium who is not a registered voter in Tewksbury? We welcome you to town meeting and hope that you enjoy this process. Visitors may attend the meeting and sit only in the reserved-for-visitors section to my left. Media may sit in the visitors' section or at the press table. For all of you that attend faithfully, I thank you for your continued presence in this evening and your commitment to an involvement in this community. Sitting up here are the various towns, boards of the town, with elected and appointed members, including the Select Board, the Planning Board, Town Council, the Board of Health, department heads, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, library trustees, the Shawshank Technical School Committee, and the Housing Authority. Please allow me to introduce the chairman of the Finance Committee, Richard LaVassar. Mr. LaVassar will make the first motion on every article unless the Finance Committee is deferring to another board. Mr. LaVassar, may I hear a motion to waive the reading of the warrant articles?
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the reading of the warrant articles.
Motion to waive the reading of the warrant articles, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Non-voters who are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent. Typically, we hear from non-voters who are employees, volunteers, or advisors to the town. Mr. LaVassar, may I have a motion to permit the following persons to address the meeting: non-voter-appointed members of any town or regional committees or task forces, non-voter employees of the town of Tewksbury, including the Tewksbury Public Schools and Town Council.
Mr. Moderator, I move to allow certain anticipated non-residents to speak on issues, including Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, Fire Chief Joe Kearns, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry. How's this better, worse? How's that better? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move to allow certain anticipated non-residents to speak on issues, including Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, Fire Chief Joe Kearns, School Business Manager David Libby, EPW Director Kevin Hartman, Town Council Kevin Feely, and others, some of whom may be asked to answer resident questions.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted unanimously. If there are any other non-voters with us tonight, they may only speak upon further motion and consent at the meeting. If you are a visitor to town meeting and would like to speak in an article during the debate, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself with your name and address, and I will hold a brief vote before you begin. Article 1, Mr. LaVassar.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 1.
Article 1, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate funds into the fiscal year 2025 departmental budgets. Anyone rising for debate on Article 1? Seeing none, we'll hold a voice vote, all those in favor of Article 1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 1 is adopted unanimously. Article 2, oh, there is a Scrivener's error on Article 2, there was a misspelling of the word project. May I have a motion on Article 2, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 2.
Anyone rising for debate of Article 2? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 2 is adopted unanimously. Article 3, Mr. Montori, I believe we have an amendment for Article 3?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the handout on the fourth page, there's an amendment to Article 3, and we're striking the amount of $23,998.69 and inserting in its place $25,203.69, and we're adding two additional unpaid bills at the bottom of the list, the first is for the Regional Communications Center, New England Alarms, $805, and for Police Department, LaSalle University, $400.
Does anyone need clarification or further detail on the amendment? Anyone standing to debate the amendment on the floor? All those in favor of adopting the amendment for Article 3, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment to Article 3 is adopted. Article 3 as amended, this article requires nine tenths of a vote, so we're going to do, going back to the article as amended, do I see anyone rising to debate Article 3 as amended? Seeing none, Article 3 is a, requires a nine-tenths vote, so we're going to do a reverse standing vote, so all those in favor of adopting, all those opposed, excuse me, all those opposed to the adoption of Article 3 as amended, please indicate by rising or otherwise clearly indicating.
Dustin, we haven't made a motion on that.
Oh, excuse me, plowing ahead, go ahead.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 3 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. LaVassar. Any debate? Okay, as I said, this is a nine-tenths vote, moving to a vote, we're going to do a reverse standing vote, all those opposed to Article 3, please indicate now by standing or otherwise clearly indicating so. All those in favor of the adoption of Article 3 as amended, please indicate by rising at this time. You may be seated, thank you, Article 3 as amended is adopted unanimously. Article 4, Mr. LaVassar.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 4, raise and appropriate $166,237 for the purpose of the article.
Thank you. Anyone to debate Article 4? Seeing no one rise to debate Article 4, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor of adoption of Article 4, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 4 is adopted unanimously. Article 5, Mr. LaVassar.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 5, raise and appropriate $221,014 for the purpose of the article.
Thank you. Anyone wish to debate Article 5? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption, the adoption of Article 5, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 5 is adopted unanimously. Article 6, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 6.
Any debate on Article 6? Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of adoption of Article 6, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 6 is adopted unanimously. Article 7, Mr. LaVassar.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 7.
Any debate on Article 7? Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of adoption of Article 7, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 7 is adopted unanimously. Article 8, I believe that has an amendment, Mr. Montori?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On page 4 of the handout for town meeting, Article 8 is being amended by striking out after raise and appropriate the sum of, strike out the word money, and insert $797,35, and then after transfer the sum of money, strike out the word money, and add $5,996,154 from certified free cash.
Thank you, Mr. Montori. Do I see anyone rising to debate the amendment listed on page 4 of your handout for Article Seeing none, all those in favor of the adoption of the amendment of Article 8, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The article is amended unanimously. Article 8 as amended, Mr. LaVassar?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of the article as amended.
Thank you. Any debate on Article 8 as amended? Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of the adoption of Article 8 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Article 8 as amended is adopted unanimously. Article 9, Mr. LaVassar.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of the article.
Any debate on Article 9? Article 9 requires a two-thirds vote, so again, we're going to be doing Article 9 in reverse standing order. All those opposed to the adoption of Article 9, please indicate by standing or indicating All those in favor of the adoption of Article 9, please rise at this time. You may be seated, thank you, Article 9 is adopted unanimously. Article 10, Mr. LaVassar.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 10.
Any debate on Article 10? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of Article 10, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 10 is adopted unanimously. Article 11, please, Mr. LaVassar.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 11.
Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the adoption of Article 11, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 11 is adopted unanimously. Article 12, I believe we have a, an amendment to Article 12.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, there is an amendment to Article 12, and the first paragraph at the last sentence, the last line, striking 10 mile and adding 50 miles. Also, in the next section, the last line, where it says live within A, strike 10 miles there also and add 50 miles.
Thank you, Mr. Montori. So there's a slight Scrivener's error in the handout on page 4, where the amendment would change the words 10 mile to 50 miles, and in both the first and second paragraphs. So the first, strike through is correct, as it's shown in your handout, towards the, on the last line of the handout, where it says 10 mile, that's going to be struck and replaced with 50, to be clear. Do I see anyone rising to debate the amendment of Article 12? Yes, ma'am, if you would, please introduce yourself with your address.
Anne Hagstrom, 125 Livingston Street. Extending this to 50 miles suggests that someone could live in another state and potentially be our state, and be our town manager, is that correct?
That's correct, as long as it's 50 miles within the boundary of the town.
Okay, so they could be in another state, and, okay, 10, 50 miles, which means they, okay, that means they could be in Maine or New Hampshire.
If, and that would be depending if they got appointed as town manager.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tom Lynch, 104, Boston Place, so this is just a question about what we're voting on here, is Zory changing the rule, or voting on changing the rule from 10 to 50, or is he deleting?
Mr. Montori?
So let me give you some of the history of how we got here, so back in 2015, Town Meeting voted to authorize a home rule petition to be sent to the legislature to change the 10 miles to 50 miles. It was sent to the legislature, but it didn't pass during the session, and it sat through two sessions without getting passed. Because of that, they cannot refile it now, and we need to go back to Town Meeting to get it reauthorized. When this was brought forward, the original article would have deleted any type of miles for the manager to live within the town boundaries and just leave it without mileage. The Board of Selectmen wanted to go back to the original intent of a town meeting voted on in 2015 and added, asked to amend the article to 50 miles, so the 10 miles is being deleted, 50 miles is being inserted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch, thank you, Mr. Montori.
I don't know if we'll have to speak twice, I, I'm in favor of the change, 50 miles sounds fine to me.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Any other debate or discussion on the amendment to Article 12 as outlined and modified in your handout? Seeing none, all those in favor of the adoption of the amendment to Article 12, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The article is amended. Article 12 as amended, any debate on the amended article at this time? Mr. LaVassar, can I have a motion on Article 12, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 12 as amended.
Thank you. Article 12, another chance for debate, Article 12 as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of Article 12 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The article is adopted. Article 13, can I get that? Mr. Montori, I understand there's a motion on Article 13 you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, I'd ask that Article 13 be withdrawn.
Motion on the floor is to withdraw Article 13, all those in favor of withdrawing Article 13, let me, let me open the floor to debate, excuse me, anyone to debate the motion to withdraw? Mr. Lynch?
Tom, 104, Boston Place, what's the reason for removing it, just curious, sorry.
Mr. Montori?
When the Cannabis Control Commission brought forward these new regulations, we tried to get out in front of the new model bylaw, but as we reviewed it and discussed it, we felt we needed more time to look at it to make sure it works right for us, so we spoke, the Assistant Town Manager spoke with Cannabis Control, we have through 2025 to come back with this bylaw, we just want to make sure we have everything right.
Okay, thank you, I'm in favor of withdrawal.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other debate? Motion to withdraw Article 13, all those in favor of withdrawing Article 13, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 14, Mr. LaVassar?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 14.
Do I see anyone rising to debate Article 14? Seeing none, this article requires a two-thirds vote, so on counted votes, I like to do reverse standing, as you may have learned by now, all those opposed to the adoption of Article 14, please stand or otherwise clearly indicate at this time. Thank you, all those in favor of the adoption of Article 14, please rise at this time. You may be seated, Article 14 is adopted unanimously. Articles, excuse me, Articles 15 and 16, I have before me a notice of withdrawal signed by the attorney for these articles, for the group submitting these articles, so they've requested Mr. Scaronno... So they, they've requested, Mr. Scarono, Attorney Scarono, has requested the withdrawal of fifteen and sixteen in paper. So unless, unless I see anyone rising to object to that withdrawal? Okay.
Yes.
Tom Lynch, 104 Boston Place. I just, I'm not well-educated on the topic, but for Article sixteen, it seemed like it might allow constructing, like, or allowing another dwelling on those zones. So it seemed like a nice article to have. I don't think the town center is going to be that huge, so maybe we should keep that one?
Thank you. Well, unfortunately, we don't currently have a motion to adopt the articles. So we're going to start with Article fifteen. Do I hear any motions regarding Article fifteen? Seeing no motions? We're going to withdraw Articles fifteen per the written request. Sorry, the town clerk is helping me out. We do have to take a, a vote to withdraw. So on Article fifteen, all those in favor of withdrawal of Article fifteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article fifteen is withdrawn unanimously. Now Article sixteen. The written motion to withdraw Article sixteen, any discussion, further discussion or debate on Article sixteen? Do we, do I see anyone rising to make a motion on Article sixteen?
If I have this power, could I transmit a motion to adopt Article sixteen? That sounded real, right?
Mr. Lynch, yes.
Tom Lynch, 104 Boston Place, sorry.
Thank you, sir. I don't see why not. I don't see why not. No, actually, a motion to adopt an article in the, in the warrant doesn't require a second. But nonetheless. Article sixteen, since we're not voting on the motion to withdraw, we're first going I didn't think tonight we'd get this tricky. Thank you very much. Mr. Lynch, is it? We're going to take the motions in order that they were received, so because we saw a motion to withdraw, we're going to take that first. That'll be a majority vote, voice vote. If you would like to discuss or debate, or anyone else to discuss or debate, the motion to withdraw, please stand at this time. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, I really want to must say, I motioned indefinite postponement, making indefinite postponement, which is a mistake. If somebody wants to withdraw, you shouldn't be allowed to withdraw.
Thank you. So it's a motion for indefinite postponement of the motion to withdraw. Is that correct, sir? Yes.
Indefinite postponement of the article.
Indefinite postponement of the article. Motion, a motion to indefinitely postpone an article gets the first vote, as I understand it. And this is going to be a majority vote held in, held in standard order, but if you are in favor of the article, you're going to want to vote no on the motion for indefinite postponement. So indefinite postponement is a motion to kill the article. Okay? So if that's, if that's clear, to pass the article, you're going to want to vote no if you support the article. Okay? All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article sixteen, which would generally mean you oppose Article sixteen, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed to indefinite postponement of Article sixteen, please indicate by saying no. The motion is adopted. To indefinitely postpone Article sixteen, the article is defeated. This concludes the agenda for tonight. Again, it has been my pleasure to moderate the special town meeting. Thank you for, to the boards, committees, and staff that make town meeting possible, and thank you for all your dedication to Tuxbury's tradition of open government. Mr. Lavasser, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Moderator, I motion to adjourn special town meeting on the first 2024, seated down.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.